We're all set to call the order on our.
Call the order.
Hey, when you take the manifesto.
Yeah.
Go ahead. Those tests.
That's on my desk right next to it.
Welcome, everyone. All right, course order signature. Uh, we had a MS two thirty two. We have to sign out here at a town meeting. That was voted on. Auto was uh. Two million nine hundred and sixty six thousand five hundred and one. Sign off on the board of selectmen's minutes from April second twenty twenty four. And we had a lot of uh timber cuts.
Town's gonna be bald shortly.
Once again. With the storm also. And this was uh. Change of attacks. That was it, I'm signature. Next item. Manifest and make a motion to approve the manifest for April eleventh twenty twenty four for the amount of thirty six thousand. Twenty twenty dollars and ninety one cents. All in favor? Make a motion to approve manifest for April eighteenth twenty twenty four from the amount of hundred fifteen thousand. Six hundred ninety eight dollars and eighteen cents. Make a motion to approve the board of selectmen's minutes dated April second twenty twenty four. All in favor? Right. Uh, we got notified from Freedom, they're uh setting up a cell tower. So. Should uh that was uh they provided a. The minister of public meeting that was held March twenty first. And uh. See, I'm looking for.
It's the one you just said. Next one.
Okay, so the next public meeting is May sixteen. Twenty twenty four and six thirty. At the Freedom Town Hall. That's where his cell tower.
Cause there was regional impact, that's why there was being regional impact on this.
Chris, you know where the uh. Excuse me, Leo, can I speak to Chris?
Yeah, sure.
You know where the location of the tower is gonna be?
Three sixty five feet pocket trip.
Oh, okay. Well, it's in the piney woods.
Yep.
Thank you.
Uh, board of selectmen reports.
You're in the appointments first.
You did it.
You did it?
Yeah.
No, that's okay.
Board of selectmen reports, who wants to go first?
So the boundaries and annexation survey stuff, I can go handle today. Um, Dave Pine Tree basically take this one on and. Consult the new website and fill it out. It looks like it's basically updating any road name changes in town. If there's any roads that have been added. Um, we haven't changed any of the boundaries to the town, so we're all set there, so it's really.
So the ones up to the. Yeah.
If anything has been approved through twelve thirty one of last year, twenty twenty four. Basically, it's updated on here. Anything that's been approved this year won't show up on this one, will show up on next year's. Um, there's actually required colored pencil. Requirements which.
Is this every year or every five?
Comes every year. Um. I hope when he's something colored pencils that came with it when he got the package. Does it? He's gonna have to potentially put some stuff in there. Um, the only street that I could see that might need updating would be Wedgwood, which is. That. One that goes off the end of Culver Hill and Snow goes out across the swamp. It's not listed in there, but it probably should be.
Is Knox not road?
Yes, Knox is on there. Yeah.
Wedgwood is off Knox.
Technically, yeah, go down to the bottom of the valley and put it down line and then changes when it goes into Parsons Field. Um, it's a May thirty one deadline, so there's time to do it. Um, it is a requirement by law to submit it. So even if we had no changes, we still have to submit the document. Um. And the uh, the information. Is really important because any potential government funding we get. They use this updated information to do that, so. It is kind of important to them. Happy briefing, which is.
Check is. There's a law change from the pre-ambulation of the actual line itself as far as. Walking into the.
And didn't when I, we, I listened to about an hour of this hour and forty five minute video on, it didn't cover that at all in any of that. Um, it looked like it was really. It said, if you have changes. Then there's a whole documentation requirement between states. That has to be. We'd have to come up with the send in with that document, so we haven't modified our line that we're aware for any reason. So as long as we modify it, we don't have to do anything to look into that town line part of it. But within the town boundaries, roads and some other stuff. It's ver- verifying the names are correct in there. If they're not, you make the corrections. If something's missing, you add it. And it's all done. Um, he could do it online if he wants to, but it looks like in the past, because we got the package. It looks like we've requested to be by paper rather than doing the online system.
So monkey wrench, there was a subdivision that was approved last year. Where the sub, where the name's road name. So that was approved in twenty twenty three, but then road name got kicked back. In twenty twenty four.
It's not, that's not approved yet.
So it's not approved, so it doesn't.
Yeah, I wouldn't put it on there because it, because we're, if we do put it on there, we're supposed to list the final road name. And that, we don't have it yet.
How'd you get this through the planning board?
Yeah, so what happened, Dave, Dave handed it to George when I was at the planning board meeting the other night, George started going to it and I said, that doesn't belong with you. And when I got back and worked on it today, it's like it's clear it belongs in our office and Dave's the one that she. The uh. Can we do a work session? Later this week, Thursday afternoon or Friday sometime? Are you?
I can do Friday. Thursday afternoon, I gotta go to the school board meeting, so.
Okay. Um. Time in the morning. What I want to do is get the three of us. And get Tyler and get JT. And go down through the laundry list of bullet points that we were acquiring during the emergency. And look at how we make me tackle those moving forward. And I think it's a good couple hour discussion, and I will also try and get the ever source communication person here, but I'll talk about that in a.
Can we do eleven?
I can make a word.
All right, that's perfect.
Sure. Cause we can, we can take a minute.
Yeah, I just have my daughter.
We can take.
I mean, I've already got the laundry list of bullet points that I want to talk about, so we just have to fill in around the bullet points. Okay. Um. I started to work on a uh thank you letter that I want to send out from the board, I'll have that for Friday. To ever source. Um, I had a chance to reach out. And physically talk to the supervisor a couple of times during the storm. And um. Sunday night, when he left, I thanked him very much. And I wrote him on Monday saying, hey, who can we send a letter to on behalf of the town for the? Hard work you did. He gave you the communication director who's located out of Chikorua. And had a good discussion with her. Um, they're very, very, very appreciative of all the community support that Effingham provided during the storm. Uh, for not only the use of the library building in the parking lot, but the. Fire department doing the spaghetti dinner down at the elementary school with the Red Cross, the whole bit, I mean, there was, it was some great publicity there. Um, and I'll invite her if she's available, cause she said she wouldn't mind coming in and she'll give us any ideas that she can throw at us too. Uh, from that standpoint. And well, I'm on ever source. Um. They use the library as a staging area for telephone poles and transformers. And supervisor meetings with, with their management team. Um, the library let us, let them in to utilize bathroom facilities. And they actually used the, in the DVD room, there's a small table. Uh, when I went in Sunday morning, there were two tables back to back, there were seven laptop computers plugged in and three people going full tail. On it, they couldn't thank us enough. Um, they did tell me uh as a result of that, when I was talking with Mary Kate on Monday, the specialists. That they recognized that the building uh could probably use a generator. So they're actually gonna be looking into some type of a uh possible grant or donation on a generator capability. And larger than that, they recognize that the driveway to the library sucks. Um, and they are basically offering up one of their road engineers. To come out and meet with us to talk about. Uh, possible improvements that could be made to the library hot spot for future staging areas whenever source. So. Well, when I drove in Sunday night, as I came up over the grade from. The uh historical society, there was a telephone pole track the trailer truck right from top of the dome. And uh. I've watched him trying to get into the parking lot. And we're gonna need a wider mouth than we have been talking about for a while. To be able to get in there.
Present there.
So, but, but at this stage of the game, if they want to provide an engineer to us to give us a bunch of design ideas. We'll let the engineer tell us what they may or may not need for what. And in that, so. We, we could be getting, we could be seeing some additional resources, they'll never source that of us in those two areas. Um. The um. New website, Caitlin, um, and talking to a couple of the different groups and boards. When we have that in a data format, could we reach out to those individual boards and committees? And say, hey, folks, is an access to your site verify your information?
Yeah.
Um, because there's some links in on some of the existing site that. Apparently aren't working correctly, and it's an opportunity with the new site to make sure whatever we post up.
Wait, wait, what's that gonna be?
So it was originally going to be this week, unfortunately, town cloud, the website. Uh, manufacturer had network issues. So it's delaying it a little bit more, but we have a meeting. Tomorrow's Wednesday or tomorrow, so hopefully have another update so we can get this going.
So, Sunday morning, um, as a result of a discussion kind of late Saturday night that Chris and I had. We opened up the transfer station um and had um. The winter contractor doing one plow through, we had no power there. But we figured with the open pop. Uh, dumpsters of people that wanted to empty the refrigerators and freezers with the food. Would give them a chance to get it out of their house, so. Um, the ones swiped through were perfect. Uh, fortunately, the power came on about six o'clock Sunday morning, so we're actually able to use the compacters. Um, one of the things that became evident there is without. Cell coverage or phone coverage. Uh, running the station. Has a bit of a risk to it in the event that somebody falls, gets hurt or something else like that. So I've actually been working on a project for the town hall um to add an extender to the tower. Which would expand the cell coverage a little bit in center Effingham. And as a result of what I observed with Brad on Sunday. Um, I'm actually gonna look at expanding, expanding that design a little bit. So that it would actually reach from the town hall. To the transfer station. Um, and we'd be able to have wifi coverage and cell coverage at the transfer station. Run off the library wifi system. So, um, it's, and it's not expensive to do, it just takes some engineering and thought to do it, so.
Well, that covered the fire station. Sure.
The fire station's nineteen hundred feet. From the tower, the transfer station is about thirteen, fourteen hundred feet from the tower. When I have a look at it, I'm gonna have a look at both designs. Um, I looked at one two years ago, they would cover three hundred thousand square feet, so it's a, it's a circle because the way it goes out. And would actually hit the fire department too. So. We'll, we'll take a look at, we'll take a look at the technology, take a look at what it'll be, take a look at, you know, what power requirements might be. Um, and factor that in now, because if we're gonna be looking at a generator for the building, we probably wanna factor future stuff into that at the same time.
We're running an extra conduit up to the tower, right?
Okay, we've got two of them we're running. Last night at the planning board meeting, it came out that there's, excuse me, not last night, nights one and the other. Um, there's a cemetery list. That was delivered to the town office here. Do we make that available to the public to see, or how, how does that set up, you know?
So. It was given to us um by our resident. Nothing has been told me otherwise, so it would, so it could be public, but it doesn't contain, you know, much information. It's more of a history, it shows um all cemeteries that are in Effingham, not just.
I wouldn't take it out.
No, I'll take it out of the office.
It, yeah, no, no takeout office, I wanna say it went up to ninety six or ninety nine and before, I don't remember the beginning date though.
I think it's seventeen hundreds.
It could be.
Yeah, it's, it's Paul Connor that basically.
I was gonna say.
There's three copies, we got one of them here at the town. Um, roughly how many pages we learned that, you remember?
It was like a.
I don't think we might want to get dig or do that, but I'll, I'll come in and work with you on that. Uh, from that standpoint, okay. Um. One of the things that's come out with a couple of the discussions that I've listened to in a couple of different meetings, there's. Um, a number of the boards and committees. Um. Are having. Issues meeting the five day refunders to get their draft minutes in here and get them posted in, in the boxes. Um, and one of the questions came up again at the planning board meeting. Would there be a capability? Or the draft minutes to be sent to the office, we have the office. Literally print them in and put them in the binder, but the border committee final minutes. Have their responsibility.
Yeah, so right now, a lot of the boards are sending them to me, so they can put them on the website. Um.
But they're sending you the final, right?
Planning board has been sending either drafts too.
Okay.
So if that's a case of getting their drafts, printing it and putting it in there, I'm more than happy to do that. Um, and then the finals, you know, obviously signatures they can bring in here and.
I'd rather that the final be their responsibility that way, because we don't control their. Minutes like the ZBA and the planning board, and a bunch of committees theirs. Um, but the drafts we could offer, hey, rather than just drive down here special for plugging in a draft.
Just they could send it right to Miami, I can print it off real quick and put it in their executive.
Okay with that?
Yeah.
All right.
If she's okay with it, I'm okay with it.
Um. All right, uh, last. Quick plug for the historic town hall project, um, the monthly meeting is tomorrow night at the library, six o'clock. Um, the first part of the twenty twenty four work begins Monday the twenty ninth. The window company, uh, Talis Historic Restoration is coming out. And they will be taking out the second and third floor windows and starting the restoration on those. Um, and because we've got all of, every window in the buildings covered with storm windows, we don't have to worry about plywood board ups and things like that, because the windows are still gonna. Shed the weather from that standpoint, and we're not heating upstairs anyway. Um.
What, should the windows today, take windows out, should they mark where it comes from, which?
Well, you know, you're gonna get a chance to see the detail that they're gonna do that. It's, it's each individual piece gets marked and cataloged and.
Okay.
And done. Um, I received a. Uh, suggestion to get ahold of the New Hampshire Division of Historic Resources, the Arts Council. Um, side of the uh program up there, which. We've got most play grants in the past from the conservation license play program. That's the one we kind of hear about, there's actually an arts council side that's funded by the similar kind of money. And um. They basically uh listened to a presentation Grace and I did. And they've, they've suggested that we send in a letter of intent. For the maximum of twenty thousand dollars to look at re-renovating the bathrooms to an ADA level bathroom capability. The library has already received two grants totaling fourteen thousand dollars specifically for ADA bathrooms. So assuming we pull this off, we can get, we've been around thirty five grand towards that particular project in twenty twenty five. That's what I've got for now.
You're up.
Well, thank you.
Thank you, Jack. Uh, so the first thing on my list is obviously to discuss the storm, I don't know if we wanna do that now, if we wanna wait and.
Let's leave, you wanna do it now, we'd have a public comment with it.
Well, I'll, I'll do the rest of my comments and then we'll.
Yeah, that's perfect.
Uh, Rife Road paving, the, they're gonna start the reclamation on Thursday. Wow. Um. So be anticipating that. And uh.
Should we let High Watch know that they can let their employees know that that bathroom might not be available or be reduced for? Find element. At least.
I don't know, I can just watch it. Yeah, do we get that contact? You were waiting, cause you said you were, we and I talked the other day, you needed to get contact information this afternoon. And one of these two gentlemen had the number, right?
I have a number. It's a cell phone that belongs in the.
I have a number.
Yeah, so.
I guess number to the supervisor that just gets passed around, so whoever's.
What's the timeline, I mean, what's the timeline for your paving? When they're looking at.
Oh, that'll be, that'll be done by the middle of next week, so.
So I can run it there tomorrow.
As a courtesy one.
In, in, in all honesty.
It'll be up there.
The best time. If you look at the traffic pattern, these guys can attest to that, it's Greenmont Road. Yeah. Rife Road twenty five.
Yeah.
There's a few employees that reside in like the apartments or go and use the store, but the flow of traffic for the. To the business, if you will, is Greenmont Road.
Good.
And residents that live on that road today. Do we need to let dispatching off?
I can let them know, and if you want, I can run up there tomorrow, just let's rise and go by the way there, the ways that we like.
Um.
A bus stop. Right there.
That bus stop is actually, actually at the intersection of Greenmont Road, Rife Road.
Right. It'll be accessible, I guess, if you're.
Yeah.
So how far are you gonna? Right, right?
They go on right to the intersection of Greenmont Road, the triangle, the bus doesn't go on to Rife Road, they stay on. Yeah. And the residents, there's only one residence that drives from the apartment complex to the intersection, pick up a kid, the rest will walk every day. Um. Another announcement is, this is a, I'm going to read a. Post uh. Notice. It is for a bike giveaway. For, but there's a uh recycling program, it's called the recycling program. Um, it is. At the Caracan House of Corrections, it is a program for the inmates and. They are accepting and, and asking for donations of bicycles. Uh, Caracan recycler will be at the County Annex in Austria on Saturday, May fourth, from ten to one, accepting youth bike donations. These bikes will be, will then be served. Service through the bike. Technician flat offered at the county jail and redistributed for free to individuals and organizations in need. So anybody has a bike they'd like to get rid of. At the county complex. On May fourth. From ten to one. Uh. I will be attending the school board meeting. He is attending as well. Um, not school board meeting, I'm sorry, it is a, the building committee, some committee. At three o'clock on Thursday at the SAU office to discuss the solar field. Um, it was something that I was hoping to do in April, but the meeting was actually, ah, excuse me, March, meaning it's actually in Acapulco. This miscommunication. Um. The. Meeting is actually more important now. Because of. The events that happened with the storm. And things that went on at our. Emergency shelter, there were some deficiencies that went on with the generator that we pay for. Um, that were identified that we will discuss further and, you know, our, our work session, a breakdown of what went right, what went wrong. Um, but we'll be discussing that further, and for me, it kind of solidified. Our case that I think it's a wasted opportunity to have that solo field there on governmentless property, and they're just selling electricity back and it's not hooked to build. So, um, we'll be attending to discuss, discuss that on Thursday. Um, been in contact with um. Mike DeAndrea is the road sweeper that we used last year. His. His company name was, his kids' names, I'm sorry, it's sick, can't read for a second, um. About road sweeping. Um, and parking lots.
Need to do the library this year.
So library transfer station, this driveway.
I got chewed out for telling you don't, don't bother with the last year. I think we should do it this year.
Well, yes, I mean, he's a few weeks out, and that's one thing we did discuss is, there's obviously some, some degree this, but. It all depends what we wanna do, if we wanna do all the roads. Yes, if we wanna do parking lots, bridges, intersections. Um, I know that there was a need last year that there was some discussion that we probably should have done a little crossroad, well, the. Uh, library last year and we didn't, but obviously the fire stations here, transfer station, library. And the intersections and bridges.
And bridges, yeah, that's how I'm trying, right?
Is that what we wanna do?
Yep.
We usually take care of bridges. We can do that, don't want me to do that, that's pretty difficult. Yeah, so you don't, you want me to skip the bridges? Okay. So we'll get them on the schedule for the parking lots and things like that, so. The same rate as last year.
What was the, uh, price, the price of it?
You would have had to ask me that, cause I didn't bring that.
Okay, we'll talk about it later.
And I don't, I didn't have it. Uh, I will let you know before we reschedule it, so, and, and he's a couple of weeks out, so we'll, we'll most likely have a meeting and know the price.
Before.
That we can, we can forward on before then. Um. One problem has arisen, I kind of. Scratch from this before. The uh board last year, we implemented a policy for uh setting up appointments for. Our assessors, zoning officer, uh, field officers and things like that for one on property. Um. And there are those few occasions where that. Could potentially. Become, it'd be extremely difficult. And the case in point this time is the property just exchanged hands, it hasn't been registered at the Caracan Register DJ. The old property was in our radar and was all in our list, and the problem had been. Uh, it was being mitigated, you know, that our violation been issued. There was a ERA, excuse me. Uh, ERA, DES, um, possible wetlands thing that was flagged. Uh, DS went out and looked at it, was gonna do a spring thing. Um, that stuff has all been taken care of and followed up on, and then property was sold, and two weeks later. We're back into violations with the new owner, but. So how do we wanna proceed with notifying them?
So nothing's been, leaves?
No, it's.
And nobody's got an address of anything yet?
Oh, name or telephone number, whatever.
Private sale. No real estate agent.
Guess you gotta go through the courts.
So the only way I have is appeal box?
Courts or should we just? I mean, I don't know what you guys think about, I don't think we have a post office. We, we have nothing for this. Yeah, they literally just moved into the weeks ago.
Maybe, we can get an administrative warrant.
Do we have to, do you wanna do that, or just take our? Do we have to, do you want to do that or just take our regulations and say, hey, this is what we're in violation of and maybe have. One of the offices drop it off?
Can we see anything from the road?
Yeah.
Well, an administrative warrant, if we do it right, you don't need to have anyone involved. But I'm guessing nobody here's ever done one, so.
But I mean, just a letter, I'll drop it off.
Is anybody living there? I'll can do a letter, have it handed over by the police department.
Yeah.
That's an easy one.
Who writes the letter?
Uh, yes, yeah, yeah. And then, you know, the rules, regulations, so they'll print it all and we'll get that to you guys. Uh, so. Storm damage cleanup. So so far we have focused on. Getting uh, Smith Trainers Family Tree Service who was working the town before with the years. Uh, they cut out Rife Road in anticipation of the paving. And um, they were asked to. Go along with uh. A couple of roads contractor employees and just cut back to stuff that was sticking in the road that was causing a traffic hazard. Um, obviously. Most people know, we've probably been around, Effingham got hit the hardest out of any of our communities as far as that. Damage, tree damage and and debris in the roadways. So we have a a lot of work ahead of us and we need to discuss the course of action, which we're gonna do. Are we gonna just focus on the main roads? Are we gonna just hire contractors? We have pricing, um. And just pick it up. So obviously in the town of Lost Beach, what they did was they had logging trucks with boxes on the side. Um. And they went, that was the 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 fastest and most cost effective way of of picking up the debris. I don't think that anybody, being somebody that does this. We won't live long enough to go around with a chip on the back of truck and try to tip it off. So.
Well, I think we could, we, I mean, big, big parts, we need to make sure we can. Everybody can drive down the road and not worry about having their cars beat by brush from the side of the road or. Broken windshields from stuff coming off and hanging down. There still is stuff dropping out of the trees. Uh, I saw something on Elm Street on my way back today near Lost Valley. And that had been there a few days before, it was hanging on the wires, so stuff's still coming down. Um, we do have to do something. On the dirt roads, otherwise we're not gonna be able to grade them.
Which we really need to do.
Ditch them, so we don't have much of a choice there, that's gotta be done. Um, I'm thinking in some cases. Um, the branches can be basically just shoved further back off the road, um, if it's in the wooded area of an area. Um, but we're definitely gonna have to chip or pick up. I don't think we have a choice. He's gonna chip or any picks up.
When we had the microburst, they didn't chip anything. They just picked it up with the excavator and a dump truck and in my opinion. That's not the most cost effective way of doing it, not with an excavator.
Yeah.
Um, and, you know, running that up and down the road, but. It's it's very effective, but I don't think it's the most effective, or most effective option. Not when we have um, contractors that are just waiting for us to make a decision tonight and we can reach out to them and they'll. Who's the contractors? So Barney Logging, Edwards Logging. Edwards, uh, Elliot Edwards, um. Has a truck.
Well, I wanna, with Elliot's trucks, I want to make sure that they're meeting federal requirements and state requirements. Right now, the trucks are being driven by the snow plows. Are violating federal law. Under DOT standards because they don't have the name of the company on the side or the DOT number as a commercial vehicle. Um, I'm just a little concerned. No inspections, lack of registrations, DOT numbers, um. Until there's been an inspection of Elliot's stuff, I don't want to be going any further with him on either. Um, I want to work with him on it to get it done, but he's gotta get it done. And right now his trucks don't meet it.
So their options are Smiths.
Smith or, yeah, they can go with the chipper and check rush and we can still continue to.
Talent pass, but we get a certificate of insurance from them. And we basically gotta prescribe the rate, whatever rate we're gonna be doing for the, for the work. And then basically make sure the documentation meets J T's requirements for the FEMA stock. And we started doing it, so Evans can be doing it. This can be doing it and if we want Barney to do something, we can do that too. But, you know, before I start getting logging trucks in here, I want to see some.
Well, Barney is a logging truck.
No, no, I know, but it's.
And so it's in, it's, it's. Josh, what's?
Yes.
Um, he was one of the other trucks we had.
Okay.
So.
I would concentrate on their roads, let's get this, because.
I I I know, uh, obviously. Not a road, off-road, Grand Road. Those need to be addressed, Hunter's Bridge Road needs to be addressed.
But we're gonna use two or three people to address when you know it's finding some roads, so people aren't.
So we do like north side of the mountain, south side of the mountain and go through a focus on dirt roads first. Or.
It it depends on how bad people want grading done.
Well, I I can tell you that Hunter's Bridge Road is almost impassable. Um.
Yep.
Come on, there's a cone there.
Is this not a landowner's responsibility?
No.
It's not, why is it not?
It's in the public way.
They own the land though, correct, up the middle of the street? But they, but it's, they give them the rights to build the road, right? I believe everybody owns the middle of the road.
You you do, yes, technically by law you do, but the town has a right of way and the town has the res- a. initial responsibility to maintain that right of way and the public safety. So it is our responsibility, our being the town of Effingham's responsibility to maintain a safe way.
For the road in six feet on the other side, correct?
Uh, no, it it depends on. It it depends on what the right of way is. Right of way could be, it could be a fifty foot right of way, which is twenty five feet from the center line out. Which would give you a fifteen foot or depend on width of the the road. It it all depends, you have to do a lot of deep research um, to figure that out, but um. It is within the right of way, in the public way, the town is responsible for cleaning it up.
We can still push it off to landowners, they're trees, right? We can push, we can push it past or with the town's responsibility. It's their debris. Is it not?
Well, some of the trees are on uh, the right of way.
It's not, that's not a legal issue unwilling to take on, because there's no sign.
That then, you do bring up, I mean, I'm not gonna sit here and say you don't bring up a good argument because on the. Let let's take this for an example. If you have a problematic tree. That's creating a danger, what we feel, the town feels, is creating a danger. It's rotten. Couple limbs fall off it every time the wind blows or something like that, you want to cut that tree. We have to go get landowner permission to cut that tree. So. Now, what do you think's gonna happen? If we we have to get landowner permission to cut that tree, what are we gonna have to do to put that tree back on the property once it's fallen in our right of way?
And I hear you, I'm just, I'm just looking at, it's good for the public good for keeping the roadways clean, right? But there's also. There's also a cost issue, right, that the town and other people are picking up, so. I shouldn't clean up my side of the road, which is what I already did, right? So there's, there's no point in me doing this every time we have a storm. I should just like leave everything the way it is and and the town will pick it up. Is that, is that the plan? Because this is gonna happen again, right? Because the weather's changing and the weather's getting worse, so we're gonna, we're gonna deal with this. You know, until we're not here anymore, right? So I'm looking for, like, what's the long term plan, right?
Question. And and I I do, I, I appreciate your, your position on it's costing us money. It is our hope. And unless I hear otherwise from the other side of the room there. That there will be disaster declaration and we could stand to see up to seventy five percent, it's not a hundred percent. But seventy five percent of reimbursement through FEMA funding. If it's declared emerged a disaster, much like a couple of the rain events last year, um. And if that's the case, I mean, I I do see your point, but for every dime that we potentially save by just. Pushing the stuff onto people's land, we in the town would spend in Carroll County Superior Court. Fighting court cases while we get through my land. So. And I do, I do, and I believe, I'm not gonna speak for these guys, but I'm at the same time, not gonna say that they don't give a, but. You 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 clean, you clean the side of the road, that's fantastic. I thank you for that. I do the same thing. Our road, my road is, movie road is taken care of.
At least all done too.
It's cleaned up.
I'm sure it is, right?
I mean, for every little bit that we all pitch in, you know, that's, you know, that saves all of us money, you know, in in our wallets and in purses and. Um, and I thank you for that, but.
The right thing to do and I'm, I'm trying to like, I'm gonna encourage that. But I am worried about the long term, right? We've got a lot of trees.
We we sure do, we sure do, and I mean, we're, we're making steps towards, um. So in nineteen ninety one, there was an expend- expendable trust fund that was established. It was for emergency management slash disaster relief fund. If you look at some of the, of course I put it away, um, if you look at some of the, the um. Town meeting minutes over the years where it was discussed. And its purpose. Um. In two thousand, uh, would be used in event of an ice storm or earthquake or other disaster. So we currently have thirty nine thousand fifty five dollars and twenty three cents in that fund. Um, that's where we are going to be, it it fits the bill for this sort of thing. So when and if we do get any kind of money from FEMA. That money will go into our general fund and we, I anticipate at town meeting next year. Will take that money and make a, a warrant article to remove that money from any given fund and put back into this to make this whole. And my, my goal is, and when I've talked to these two gentlemen about it, and I think we all feel the same, is to take that up to a hundred thousand dollars. And because you're right, the weather is changing, these type of events are happening more and more frequently. And if we have that. It's still our money, I get it, just like grants are still taxpayers' money, but if we have that nest egg. Um, we're not robbing Peter to pay Paul.
Yeah, let me, let me answer on what you're doing there. FEMA typically, when we submit the claim, it won't get paid this year, it'll get paid next year. So by law, we can't spend more than what the folks in town allocated at town meeting. So we're gonna take that money out of our current fund somewhere to pay it out the door. And get it back in another cycle. By having this fund. We can access that fund now, doesn't mean we have to do anything to the existing budget.
It's a buffer.
It's a buffer, exactly what it is, it's a rainy day buffer. And as you said, it's getting more common.
I'll let you have a question.
I just had a point. Another problem is just pushing a lot of that brush off to the side, J T from rally test. You're creating a much more. Enhanced fire hazard. And especially with people throwing trash and cigarettes out of the cars. You could be opening the town up to a major forest fire.
Love these on my property.
Get the note, um, I don't remember, in two thousand and ten, they never, they did not end up taking money out of the fund. Okay.
No, no, no.
I would love it to be reworded a little more specifically. Going forward next year, because it went around and around and around in two thousand and ten and it couldn't draw. You know, all it says for the purpose is like two lines, but unforeseen disasters. But it wasn't good for the trees, it wasn't good for the ice storm, it wasn't good for this, it wasn't, and they couldn't use it. And it went around and around, right, it wasn't unforeseen, that's weather. So I would love if you guys had that rewritten, so it was more accessible as an emergency fund. Going forward for next year. Um, I don't know what's gonna happen this year, but at least I did remember that going around, around, around and then nothing. And you could have really used it back.
Thank you. There's uh, additional comments?
Uh, no, no, but I think if I open up any of the.
I was gonna say, D R A would be good to consult with. They're the ones.
My comments, I was on the, I was in Charleston, like, pretty sorry.
Yeah, you're my husband in Florida for a week.
Yeah, it was seventy, like. So. So not much for me to report.
How was the trip?
By the way, I stopped in Virginia first, we went to Jefferson's.
No, but you got an opportunity to poll the audience. Who was the president immediately after Jefferson? Quick, quick. I don't feel too bad now.
I can listen there, his home too, the moment earlier. Okay. Um, Caitlin, please.
Um, you know how much to report? Uh, last week I did attend two classes and um, trainings at Primax. One on Wednesday and one on Thursday, um, one for crisis media, um. I can't remember the whole word, crisis media reporting, I believe, and that almost contracts, contract very helpful. Um, I do have a few announcements as well.
Before you go there, what were the two biggest things you learned at the Primax meeting?
Which ones?
The Primax one, wow.
They're both, one was contracts and one was crisis media.
Contracts.
Contracts, I, a lot of the times or a lot of the things I learned about it is really the wording that you use in regards to the insurance side of it. They did focus mostly on the insurance side of the contracts compared to just the legal stuff. Um, learned a lot about um, how it should be worded compared to what you should do and what you shouldn't do. So, um, and a lot with, when you get certificate of insurances, how it should be shown as. To prevent any liability in a sense as well.
And the fact that they're reviewing the three on every one of our contracts.
They did tell me that too. Then, um, like I said, I do have a few announcements. The Town Clerk Tax Collector Office will be closed. Um, Wednesday, April twenty fourth, there'll be a way of training. Um, Forest Selectment Office will be closed at ten thirty that same day, April twenty four, twenty twenty four. Um, and then Forest Selectment's Office will be closed, May second, will be at a conference. So we'll be.
Be on the downside.
They will all be on downside. That's all I have.
Okay, Department reports.
These guys. We did, we did.
Reading of the census.
Oh, I'll go right to this, right? Uh, you talked about US Census. Uh, place department, best proposal, title of your own.
Wonderful. I believe you guys all have it in front of you. It's a quote for a level three tactical vest for high risk situations involving any high powered weaponry, which. Neither Brian or I or any of the other officers have right now. The only thing is, as we have is what we're wearing, which in that case, if we were to take fire by something like that, this won't stop it. Um. And I'm not gonna say that it doesn't happen around here because I personally have been involved in things where it had happened with high powered weaponry and. I want to make sure that we're all prepared. So what we have right now is a quote for. Two plate carriers right now with the plates included, uh, the pouches that we need to hold our ammunition. Our radios, and then you also see there's a turnip kit with a holder and a communication microphone. So what that microphone is able to do is it's able to stay mounted to the vest. All we have to do is quick disconnect, there's radio mics here. Hook that up and then we can hear everything in our ear, so it's not being broadcast about this. So it's a awesome shaping thing. Um. The proposal right now is just to get, um, the two for Brian and I, as they are somewhat fitted to somebody. The proposal right now is just to get um the two for Brian and I, as they are somewhat fitted to somebody. And we're our part-time, unless we may have to share them, that's something that I might have to look into down the road. Where they're both. Pretty different in size, the two that work the road for us right now. Um.
Most of the departments in this area have this type of vest.
Uh, yes, I know Ossie did a order for all their officers, I know Wakefield has it for their officers, I know Freedom has them for theirs. So that's why I'd like to get them for us, so that we were prepared for that. Um, being around the high-powered weaponry, you know, not being able to wear something. That doesn't stop, that is a little bit of a. Good afterthought till you think of it afterwards, and uh, make sure here's been that a little bit.
Can we just get like a flash or something, it'll be a lot cheaper in the moving to so.
Stopwatch.
Can we hear the price?
Uh, yeah, the total price for.
Each?
This is a total for everything, for the two carriers, the two plates on each front and back. Uh, the pouches for the um, the magazines for pistol rifle, a holder for the radio. A tourniquet and a holster in the radio communication is total of four thousand seventy-three dollars and fifty-six cents, and I'm looking for it to come out of our. Police safety equipment trust fund. That we established.
I'll second.
All favor.
Alright. Thank you.
Did they make one for the dog too?
She has it, yes.
That's okay, hers is.
She's more protective than I.
Next up is the historical district and heritage commission appointments, Susan.
Yes. Definitely, no question, someone, um, so a- as of town meeting, we, um, our membership is. Enlarging from five members to seven members. So, and the appointments for those, um, so everybody is staggered, you know, not everybody's turned us up at the same time. So, uh, we're looking for appointments, so my appointment is. Up for another three-year term, which the H D C voted to recommend me to you again. If you so choose, so it would be, um, then my term would then be up in twenty-seven. Um, then, uh, Faith Martel is currently an alternate. And she would move into uh, one of the new full memberships. So that would also be a three-year appointment. So, uh, me and Faith for three-year appointments. And then the second full membership would be Winston Morrow, who lives on Townhouse Road, across from the library. Um, he originally wanted to be appointed as an alternate to replace Chris Darcy here, but agreed. Since we're moving up to seven members, that he would uh, wanna be a full member, so that would be a two-year appointment. So. Me and Faith for three years, Winston for two years. And that leaves us with two vacancies for alternate. Um, and we're gonna put out a invitation for people to let us know that they would like to. Uh, join as alternate.
Yeah, I'd like a motion to uh, approve and support those appointments. Sure.
All favor.
Hi.
Fine, did you have your first meeting?
Well, we met last night, um, so we're kind of in this hybrid state of not having five, uh, seven members, yeah. We did have a four. Um, so, uh. In manner will will be official, I guess, and we voted last night to make official our name as the. Historic District and Heritage Commission.
Good.
Okay.
Thank you.
And so that gives us Winston. And um, Mike Conti and Faith Martel, who live in the historic districts. As members, um, Maria Crockett and I don't live in the historic district. Um, Chuck is now our rep, I'm done, but. You know.
He's close.
He's good, he's good.
I spent most of my life.
Yeah, I've been spending a lot of time, roll down. And both, uh, Chuck and Maria, um, you know, have recent experience of restoring historic homes. And I do not. But I have a dog, yeah.
Susan, do you wanna speak to the application, just at a high level?
The um, certificate, uh, yes, I think I mentioned at town meeting, we're um, working on applying to, um. The State Division of Historical Resources to be a certified local government. And what that means is that you check all the boxes that you're. Operating properly, posting notice of your meetings, keeping minutes, you know, all that kind of goes up. And that will enable us to be eligible for grant funding. Comes through the National Park Service, through the State Historical Division Office. And then we could get funded for, you know, um, hiring a professional maybe to do a survey of. Um, historical buildings or sites that are not in the historic districts, or just give us more information. On the history of our, our, you know, um, it could support us doing workshops, you know, uh. Making your historic home energy efficient, or, you know, things like that, so. Um, we're looking forward to that application and getting hopefully a grant pretty soon.
Awesome.
Yeah.
Caitlin, could you send the investment policies, they need to be effective, Susan and myself?
Yeah, we need to make sure we're operating properly with our heritage fund and. We were talking last night about, do we need to adopt? Like our, a procedure for how the commission would. Um. Expend money for that fund, that type of thing.
Policy, yeah.
Yeah, yes, exactly, policy, good work.
That is you.
Yes.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Uh, next up, uh, supervisor checklist appointment, Carol.
Yes, um, Neil Corrigan had been uh. Elected, uh, and he's for health reasons has had to withdraw. So, uh, Maureen Wolfing hyphen Hinsman, uh, ran against Steve. And she helped out of a lot of the elections last year and was great, and she has agreed to. Uh, be appointed to fill in Leo's term, he had, uh. Been elected to a two-year term, so they have another, uh, and but I guess by law, we've decided that he. Show this silver one year and then have to run again. So that's what we want to do.
I make a motion to. Approve and support the appointment of.
Maureen Wolfing and.
To supervise the checklist. I'll send him that.
All favor. That is Karen.
That's good.
Thank you very much.
Other than thank you very much for the water and the electric. In the modular, I appreciate that.
How about that?
Well, that was before, that got me going, but yeah.
But you got lights on. Yeah, bike getaway. Alright, now our favorite one. Who's up first? Carol.
While we're on the modular, my favorite building, I love it, um. Is there any reason the back door that we've had such a hard time getting in, in the winter, because it's never, it's in the shade and it's icy all the time? And we're not ADA compliant, et cetera, is there any reason we can't get them a wooden ramp going in that back door? We discussed it over here for this door, for some reason it never happened. But people can't get to our meetings, uh, and now not that, you know, Leo had a hard time getting into his way and that one. Janet's gonna have a hard time getting in and out with her bum knee, just for the people who worked there. And, uh, I mean, it's a weekend project, are there any voice scouts around, Eagle Scouts around, is there anybody who does stuff like that anymore? Um, on that back, the, yeah, I know, I know, it's the back door, go forward to the least part. Or wrap around the corner and come this way, either way, it's kind of a, a ramp.
Yes, and so I should put us on notice, it's not a.
I have to have people call ahead if they wanna come to a meeting, and then we meet them out at their car.
Or you meet them here.
Well, if they can get in here, yes, but. I met two people, I had two people, I was gonna make Janet's mom. Um, anyway, that's, that's just a request, not immediately. We don't have an election until September, so June fourth, we have our next meeting, where the last day, anybody can change their party for the presidential. Primary is June fourth.
So apparently you're in need that you have to be out there rather than using this.
All our files and our computer and everything is there.
Laptop, right?
No, as a matter of fact, I didn't want to bring it up. He's working, the library's working on that, that's not. Um, I just, it's not a big project, I just didn't know if there's. Any way to do that, I know it was discussed room between the buildings, but then we were gonna do something else and run off with water and this and that.
We have a contractor set up, right?
Out the back door doesn't seem like it's gonna be anybody prompt, but.
We'll put it on the, we'll put it on our checklist to look at, to review.
Thank you.
Again, those wooden ramps.
Marketplace for some of the only one I'm.
I'll say, somebody from building one.
They gotta mark that, uh, am I else, little comments, Steve?
Um, you guys want to be notified if. Someone sees a hazardous situation with with trees, now would you wanna wait for the people to go around to the roads to find that? Uh, no, if you know one, please let us know now. Alright, on Drake Road. Yep. Okay. It would be. Across and up from where, um. Skiing is. There is a section of, call it tree trunk. That's coming across precariously across Drake Road. But it's not attached to anything, it's like balanced. There on something else, it can come down.
Yep.
So are you aware of it?
I am.
Okay, then I'm just making sure. Thank you.
Thank you.
But so that would be the pursuit of the.
Yeah, absolutely, that's a good example, yeah.
Okay, and anything else you see, please.
I mean, any piles of brush, they don't call you, but I mean, if there's something like that. There's a potential to come down and cause harm and close the road, then.
Yeah.
Let you guys know, okay.
Yeah, and if you think that there's something that's, you know, even if it's like on a main artery and you think that. You know, we probably already know about it, to Chuck's point earlier, stuff continues to fall, you know, we had a windy spell the other night. And stuff was broke off that was hung up and is making its way down, that's gonna continue, um, part of this roadside cleanup. Um. Mr. Spencer's point too, is we might have to bring it back a little bit on somebody's property, because, you know, it's. Something's broke off over here, but, so you cut it off there, which means you gotta get a bucket truck, or do you still at the ground and. You know, get rid of the problem, so.
Okay, just.
But yeah, thank you. Take it in.
Mickey Mouse. Any chance of getting our twenty-five mile an hour? Speed limit sign back on our road?
I'm gonna make a note, so we have a signage issue, um, and somebody.
I've got a speeding issue on. Oh, he knows. I've been thinking about it all the time.
It's a sign.
There are two signs missing from each side, but it used to be almost by the corner where you turn off Fremont Road on.
Is the pole still there or just snow?
I don't think so.
It's not.
Oh, it's on your little.
So very pleased you guys added it, of course, I can, um. In order for that to be twenty-five miles an hour, just, and I'm sure, I'm not meaning.
That's what was there.
Yeah. They would have been both telling me to decrease that from.
They say it's actually just thirty for anything residential.
Or we just call it off and just put twenty-five back.
Whatever.
Double load on Stevens too.
And we did get a, we talked about the speed limit sign, we did get a request for speed limit signs on Elm Street. And.
There's one right now.
There's one going that way, it's coming this way, there's nothing.
And don't make it too new looking, because it will get stolen.
A B with a chain link.
We might not know where in Fremont also. I mean, I've seen people go by sixty miles an hour.
Yeah, yep, yeah.
Signage is a, is a big issue, and whoever put the stop sign back up on the end of Hobbs Road, thank you very much. There was a post there, and that was only to do with, but the poles, I tried to straighten, but. Um, I didn't have the proper tools with me at the time, and then last night, I went by and I happened to notice that somebody put on a stop sign back up, so. Whoever did that, thank you.
And maybe they had, somebody had a guilty contact. It wasn't impressed, but.
On those intersecting roads with the state highways, the state will come in and replace those signs, so. The town wouldn't have to expect.
Yeah, additional public count, yeah. Uh, we go, yes.
I just wanna announce. I'm sorry, Ellen Albrecht, uh, I just wanna announce that we're going to have a roadside, a town roadside cleanup. Uh, April twenty-seven. Uh, but. We're going to be stationed at the library instead of at the town offices, and with a picnic, uh, at noon. For all participants.
And hopefully the trees will be removed so you can find the trash underneath.
Yeah, well, that.
I'm gonna have that posted on the website.
Ah, yes.
This is the location library reversal. Steve, do I see?
Leo, to, um, continue on the signs, yeah.
Everybody, okay.
Well, you're the chairman, that's why I'm addressing you, you can disseminate how you want. A number of years ago, I reported that on, uh, Townhouse Road. Let me see if I give you the right, the right location, you probably, you'll recognize it, if you were John Davis's house and you're down about three hundred yards. There's an abrupt. Turn there.
Yeah.
Well, there used to be a sign there that said dangerous curve, and it was knocked down. And I reported it to the select board, it was probably like five years ago. It's never gone back up again.
It's just still there.
I don't know, it was on the ground, I believe. That when I told John Meisner, he said, thank you, I'll take care of it. But not to throw him under the bus, but it was, he was a selectman. And I don't know what happened, but the only reason I'm bringing that up is I was almost killed the other day. Coming, the officer director, somebody was going wide on that and right in my lane. And I know that it could have been someone who was not familiar with how that.
Yeah.
Were turned to there.
Severed or semperius.
Yeah.
Just past John.
And it was right there so that you would see the sign, it said dangerous curve, you would slow down and then. You wouldn't make it, but especially if you were headed towards. Center Effingham, as opposed, and, but you come in the other way, you'll get killed by someone going wide. So.
Anybody have this?
You just came just to see our faces? I'm, I'm always anticipating and hoping for comments about new faces that are viewed, so.
I just came to listen, oh, and you said pretty much everything. See, this is what I get to do when I retire, you know, I get to goof off a little bit. So I can come and look at you once in a while.
You got time to come help me clean my road up.
I cleaned, uh, half of Jones Road and all the way down, a long ways down Small Road, the Friday, the Friday they go, you got a little mess. Got people out of there.
Thank you very much for that.
So one question I will ask, is how Ossie, oh, Mike Hill Combs. Just in case you was wondering. For Ossie, when they cleaned up with logging trucks, did they group all the piles together so the guys aren't going to be fifteen feet hopping up, hopping down, hopping up and hopping down, driving?
Group all the piles together so the guys aren't going to be fifteen feet hopping up, hopping down, hopping up and hopping down driving.
That is the big difference. So we were that grouping.
Yep.
Portion of that project.
Makes sense.
We being the highway parking guys, you know, we grouped it up, we cut off the stumps, so that does. You know, pose a challenge for us, you know, effing him being different. Um, to these point, there's a lot of those things where they're operated and the stuff cut off. We can't leave that there. Um, so the log truck just can't come, they can come and just rip them out. Um, not the most effective way to doing it. So that does pose a thing. So that is gonna be an additional cost. Um, it's, there is gonna have to be a ground person. Um, and depending on. You know, how we go about this, um, there are, there is equipment with locking devices, skids gears with. Grapples on the front that can come along the side, grab the stuff and pilot. So that the truck can just come.
One thing in a rubber track. Yeah, excavator. Yep, there's one sitting in my uh. Fully insured.
And a driver looking for something.
Just letting you know what your insurance requirements are. I think I exceeded what you guys. So just throwing it out there. I took everything off Jones Road, just shoved it in the woods, just like. Yeah, but it was all wooded. And we know small road really doesn't make a whole lot of difference.
Promise to knock over the rest of my fence.
Right by the stone.
I took here in Drake Road, Mike down. Not all the way because.
So, but chainsaw is required. I can have uh, somebody email a certificate.
And rates?
Rate?
Yeah.
Could be discussed.
Okay.
Non-public session.
We do uh, we do work for the town, but your rate will be. Definitely interested. Um, any else?
I don't, but he's.
What are we gonna do?
Motion? Made a motion.
Number one. Well, you may, you know, to adjourn.
All right, we're into uh, non-public.
Make a motion going to non-public.